Yes.
Okay.
We worked, we worked long hours. Manual labor?
I don't want manual labor. Absolutely. I was at the range for seven hours today in the rain, so you're more than welcome to, you know, take over next time. We do not. We used to actually go with the nanico today. Yeah, so we actually take you back off of Camden Police Department to utilize their firearms instructor. They used to shoot there. I've shot there many times, like the range. But they've been utilizing a private instructor to come in to help them with Red Dock, and he has his own private section at the Nanico range. It wasn't a bad range. It was good. Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes we use the cricket, whatever works.
We have it on to it. I got a couple sets, so you can hand me out.
Even after the broken ones, right?
Yep, that's it.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. Right now, we have a call to order. April fourteenth, uh, May, May fourteenth, council meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Let me make sure everybody's phone is on silent. First, we're going to start with the public comments. No, okay.
I'd like to say something. I'm Pamela Teal, and I'll live here for my life. It's up to two years. I noticed that we've had our ditches, had everything falls into the ditch. A couple of years ago, I lost a lot of property, lost stuff. I was just wondering if we could have some of this residue that's built up in these ditches cleaned out. Because it's getting ridiculous. My neighbor next door, she has enough trash that it'll dim her. And I can't all time please clean your crap up. But it's just to the point where when it floods, water is built up on my property. It has taken most of my property, stones from my driveway. And my land is going down further and further from the settlement. And I was just wondering if we could have some, something done. Because of the flooding and that couple of years ago, that was a mess. And also, when you mow these ditches, you have giant maple trees. Is there any way somebody can dig them out? Because they're cool them, and somehow we need to be, I, me and my husband already took care of our side of the ditch. It's the other side of the ditch. And sometimes they grow up, and then we can't even see coming out our driveway. And I was just wondering, I noticed they did clean the front where the drain is. But left the trash in the, in all the way to the back. And it's really, and I've talked to Anthony about it because, you know, he knows I complain. Because I'm tired of having to pick up things off my property. And I'm tired of looking at this ditch looking like a site. Never had done this all these other years under the tears. There was always somebody that took care of it. Now nobody's taking care of anything. And like I said, I have lost a lot of property during that flood. A car, my neighbor lost two cars. It's just ridiculous. I would just like to have something different. That's what my husband said.
Finally, I would like to make the motion to adjust the agenda. Our orders here, because we're sure they need to go somewhere, they have more important things to do. So I'd like to move them to the next section here. The second.
Second.
Miss Jones, second class.
Yes.
Miss Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, and I vote yes as well. Okay. So we're going to move, new business presentation between you two to the audit, next. So, Miss Stern. Thank you, by the way.
Can everyone hear me okay? I sometimes I don't want to steal. So, thank you for the introduction. My name is Ashley Stern. I'm a partner with PK Essen Company. And we performed the town's audit for fiscal year December thirty first, twenty twenty. With me, I have Erica Van Vessen, who is one of our supervisors on the audit. In front of you, you have a couple documents. First, the thicker packet is your audited financial statements. So this includes all of your audited numbers. I'm not going to go through all fifty plus pages or read them to you tonight. So there are, you know, a lot of great information in this. If I could focus your attention on the management discussion and analysis, that's a summary of the financial statements. So, Ashley's meeting, if you're taking a look in here for something, that's a great, great place to go look. Then the smaller bound copy in front of you is our auditor communications. And these are our required communications with those charged with governance for the council. So we provided two letters within this report that I'll actually go over in our presentation here shortly. Where I am going to focus your attention is the printed color copy that's in front of you. We've included a summary of key points related to the audit for us to go through.
Ashley, what are you reporting to Erica? How do you spell your last name?
Van Vessen, V.A.N.
I got it right.
All right. V.A., V.A.N.
V.E.S.S.E.N.
Thank you.
All right. On pages one through three of the bound financial statements, you'll find what's called our report on the basic financial statements and the numbers within. As part of an audit, it is our responsibility as the auditors to issue an opinion on the financial numbers as reported within the financial statements that are not materially misstated. What our job is not, is not to, one, find fraud. It's, two, not, our, our job as auditors is not to create your accounting records. And three, our job is, the end of the thick copy, sorry. And, and three, our job is not to design or implement any management responsibilities or internal controls, but we can make recommendations as to such. Our opinion, as founder, in just one through three of the statements, is actually a qualified opinion. What this means is that we were not able to determine that all of the financial statements were not materially misstated due to one reason. That in twenty twenty, the town was on a previously outdated software for their receivables and their billings. The town then switched from that software, and were unable to get certain reports from that software in order to verify certain information. So it's really just basically that one item that is causing us to say that. But otherwise, we've issued a clean opinion otherwise. On pages forty eight through forty nine of our financial statements is a different report. So this is our report in accordance with government auditing standards. And it's a report of internal control over financial reporting and other matters. This is where if we noted any major material noncompliance issues, we would note any internal control deficiencies would be noted. And this is not an opinion report like the previous report I just mentioned. We did identify several material weaknesses and significant deficiencies in internal controls that we want to bring to council's attention. But we did not identify any instances of noncompliance that need to be reported. As for our material weaknesses. So internal controls deficiencies can actually be put into a couple of different categories. One, a material weakness means that if this internal control isn't operating properly, there's a chance that there might be a material misstatement within your financial records. Two, a significant deficiency, which is lesser than a material weakness, but states that if this internal control isn't operating properly, that there might be, so it's a might versus can, an instance of a material misstatement within your financial statement. And lastly, there's just other matters that may produce some type of deficiency in internal controls. As for our material weaknesses, we've reported that the town has material weakness within their segregation of duties. We see this in almost all of our small towns. You only have so many staff at the town who need to do certain responsibilities. The more staff you have, the more segregation or separation of duties, checks and balances that you can have within your internal controls. When you only have a limited number of staff, you can only have so many checks and balances, where some people are having to do one duty, another person has to check them. So in order to strengthen your internal controls, you would actually need to either hire more people or have others outside of the organization participate in your internal controls. Again, this is something we see in almost all of our small towns, but we need to make you aware for, aware of it, that there's a risk out there because you only have so many staff. The preparation of financial statements and material audit adjustments. As your auditors, be assisted in the preparation of the financial statements. And really, that's just a timing issue. Your team does not have time to prepare this sixty something page document in front of you. So you actually outsource it to us to do. And that is completely okay with government financial statements and government auditing standards. However, we have to report that to you that these were prepared and assisted by us. The bank reconciliation and undeposited funds, as you noticed, were reported here on twenty twenty. It took until November of twenty twenty four for us to be able to get the financial information. The previous records had some issues in them. They had to be recreated by another accountant. Bank statements had to be ordered. There were some missing items. So the town went through a pretty big undertaking to get that done, and we appreciate all their efforts. But of course, with that, bank reconciliation should be done within twenty days of any month end. And since these needed to be redone, they were not. So that could lead to a material issue within your financial statements. Again, I use the word could, not saying one did occur. The preparation, review, and approval of journal entries by management. There were certain journal entries that were posted as part of the recreation of your records. So it's not a typical thing for your team to post journal entries. But of course, with recreating the records, journal entries needed to be posted. And with only limited number of staff, that means that only certain people can review, approve, and post. Doesn't provide a really strong internal control. Going forward, I don't expect this to be an issue because I don't see where a lot of journal entries are used on a typical basis. So when you're not recreating entries, those, that function isn't used very often. The accounts receivable reconciliations, as I mentioned, the software that was used for the billings at the time is no, was no longer available. The reports were not available from that software. And you weren't able to actually reconcile what was in that software to what was in your financial records. And that's a recommendation that we always suggest. You should be doing account receivable reconciliations at minimum quarterly. Some teams do them monthly. And it's important to be able to track what amounts are due to the town. With the change in software, though, and the new software being available for the next fiscal years, I don't expect that that will be an issue going forward. And then restricted fund balance and net position. There are certain pieces of the town's funds that are considered restricted in nature. That means they're restricted by an outside source, whether it be the state of Delaware, another agency, or federal agency, that weren't previously being tracked as restricted by your previous auditor. We've made that correction and had that reported now, but you'll see that difference as we move through the financial statements. For the significant deficiencies, there are various balance sheet accounts that weren't reconciled timely. Again, due to the timing of when our, our audit was done, these weren't done timely and when the records were ready. Invoice documentation, there were a few invoices that were missing during our testing. But again, due to the timing of our audit, I understand that certain invoices may have been lost or misplaced at that time. And the timely financial close process. The town should have both a monthly and an annual financial close process that is timely to its size and nature. Due to the timing of our audit, the town did not have a financial close process in place or wasn't able to have a process in place. And we've recommended that that be implemented in the long run. Next, taking a look at some numbers from the town. Again, I recognize that we're looking at twenty twenty numbers, so I'm going to breeze through some of these because they are outdated and might not actually be reflective of current town finances or position. Overall, the town had about six point seven million dollars in total assets. That includes all of the capital assets, so the furniture, equipment, vehicles of the town, as well as any current assets, so the receivables, cash, et cetera, as of September thirty first, twenty twenty. This is actually down slightly from twenty nineteen, down by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's actually due to the depreciation of those capital assets over time. Whereas you buy something in one year, and then you take the expense over the life of that asset. The notes and the bonds payable were, had decreased from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty by about fifty thousand dollars. Those are the payments on those notes. And overall liabilities decreased by about a hundred thousand dollars. The overall unrestricted net position, or really could be termed as the health of the town, was nine hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. Right above that, you'll see that restricted piece at five hundred and forty six, which is restricted by purpose, so it needs to be used for certain purposes, whether it's transfer tax, which has a specific purpose it must be used for, police grants, which have a specific purpose, or, or another purpose. Taking a look at the statements of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. Just one note, this is actually on the long-term focus. So when you're looking at your budget, you're typically doing a current focus, where you're looking at what are we going to spend in the next year? What are we going to receive in the next sixty days? That tends to be the focus of, or contribute a focus of any, any budget in the big budgeting process. Whereas for accounting standards, we actually have to report on the long-term focus, where we're looking at assets that could be used longer than one year, so your capital assets. And liabilities that have a due date longer than one year, so your bonds and payables. So those items wouldn't naturally take into account when you're thinking about your budget. Taking a look at those revenues. Revenues from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty increased by just under a hundred thousand dollars. That is mainly in your transfer taxes, as well as in some franchise fees that we broke out this year just to show them separately. And our expenses actually decreased from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, year over year, due to some expense statements, and we'll talk about this in comparison to the budget. Taking a look at your total expenses, sometimes a graph, you know, does a lot of work to make. Your expenses by program actually show what the different programs and how the money is spent. Our general government is thirty five point eight, oh, eight percent of the spending, which is second to public safety, which is at forty six point five two, and public works coming in third. Of course, you spend so much time looking at your budget. I wanted to draw your attention to our budgetary comparison schedule, which can be found on pages forty four through forty six. Actual amounts were favorable to the budget by a hundred and forty two thousand dollars, meaning that the town had a budget of revenues and expenses ended up being that the town was, the actual numbers were favorable or better than the budget. Revenues were over budget due to some timing of some home settlements and transfer taxes. Remember, back in twenty twenty, the market really took off right at the end of the year for a lot of places, so we saw some differences in transfer taxes. And certain payroll and insurance items were under budget in twenty twenty. The unassigned fund balance totaled three hundred and two thousand dollars, or thirty six percent of your fund balance. Just as a note for the future, when you're looking at your unassigned fund balance, the GFOA, or the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends that no less than two months of your operating expenses should be kept in your unassigned budget. So when you're looking at your, your budget for next year, think, you know, have that kind of in your mind, what your operating expenses are, and where your overall fund balance will end up. Just for, just for a few notes, your operating expenses for your general fund were nine hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars for twenty twenty, which is about eighty thousand dollars of operating expenses per month, or right about four months. Again, they won't go less, the GFOA wants to go less than two months, but our recommendation tends to be between four and six months. One of the items that you see in the financial statements has to do with the pension or the retirement system related to the state of Delaware. This was a gas fee that was implemented in twenty fifteen that really shook up a lot of financial statements and shook up a lot of thoughts of different municipalities. On pages thirty two through thirty six and forty one through forty two, there's a lot of detail related to this pension. This is something that the town has no control over. You're required, you're participating, you're required to send a certain amount. And as long as you send the required amount, you cannot control how it's invested, if it goes up, if it goes down, the fees, anything with it. It's all controlled by the state of Delaware oversight. What we test with that is that if the town is making the required contribution annually, and I'm happy to state that the town has fully funded the required contribution for all the retirement plans. The liability was measured as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, so it's always a year behind. So the state of Delaware operates on a June thirtieth year end. So for twenty twenty, they report as of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, and they're operating on a full year behind. Little counterintuitive than would do it naturally, I think. So the liability reported on the town's financial statements was fifty three thousand dollars. Taking a look at our auditor's communication packet, as I mentioned, this includes two letters. Our first letter is our management letter or our best practices recommendations. So this is where, in the course of our audit, we noticed certain items within your accounting procedures and your accounting policies that could be stronger or that could cause certain efficiencies in your internal controls. So we've actually detailed it out here. Number one is your fund tracking. In QuickBooks or your accounting software, you have the ability and have partially utilized tracking your expenditure by fund. However, the majority of them at the time were not classified. Most likely had to do with the fact that everything was recreated. But I'd suggest going forward, utilizing that tracking. It really does help you know how each fund is doing and how money is being spent. Secondly, bank reconciliations and undeposited funds. As I mentioned, typically in small towns, we see bank reconciliations being completed by about the twentieth of the month and then reviewed in some fashion thereafter. So as part of your close process, you should be seeing that going forward. Your journal entry procedures, again, as I mentioned, there's probably not going to be a lot of journal entries. But in the case there is, I would recommend having a specific detail of why you're doing the journal entry. Have it prepared and reviewed, so two sign-offs on that journal entry, as well as any support behind why that journal entry is being created. The reason journal entries are such a risk in, in auditing and accounting environment is that they can be used to bypass internal controls or actually cover up any other instances of any misappropriation or fraud. So we always recommend very strong controls around any journal entries and your journal entry procedures. The restricted fund balance and net position, we corrected that tracking for twenty twenty, but we recommend going forward, making sure you're tracking that. Make sure your transfer taxes are spent on the right thing. You should see a recording related to that. That's one big risk in our Delaware governments that can cause some major issues. Your monthly financial close process, again, I mentioned this, by the twentieth of the month or the next month, you should be able to see your financial records reconciled for the previous month, both your account reconciliations and your bank reconciliations, to be able to provide an accurate financial data. Invoice documentation and retention, this might be somewhat of intuitive, but of course, we make the recommendation, please retain all invoices and keep them for the period of seven years. As I mentioned, I don't think that would be a problem going forward. Definition of an accounting manual. I always have to think of the if someone got run over by a bus situation. So in the event if your staff or your team got run over by a bus, is there proper documentation to be able to instruct the next person how to do their job? Excuse me. And at current, there is not. So you want to make sure to document in an accounting manual your accounting processes. Now, this could be a pretty large undertaking. But once it's created, it should only be a small update each year, but it really will protect any risks against the town in any financial matter. You, again, the, if someone got run over by a bus, by a bus, or a lottery situation, is what we talked about.
We're going to lottery.
Us auditors, we're all listening. And then lastly is, during our audit, what we truly noticed is that your accounting department is understaffed. We talked about separation of duties and segregation of duties. We talked about your internal controls. But when you have only two people in your town that are truly handling the financial burden of the town, that's a, that was, that's a lot to handle. And I believe that contributed to the timing of when the records were ready for an audit for twenty twenty, as well as a timing of why things are the way they are right now. You typically, in a town of this size, we would see at least one more person or some input from whether it's a council member who comes in and helps, not saying that you guys have to, I'm just giving you guys options, or an outside party that comes in and helps. But I think it's a good, as you're creating that accounting manual, you'll notice the processes and procedures and what each person is doing. And you'll be able to identify, hey, you're having this person do something they shouldn't be doing. Therefore, they wouldn't, not be able to do this piece of their job. So I think that's a really key, key step in all of this is, one, document your procedures, and then two, consider, do we need another person now? The second letter in that packet is our communication with those charged with governance. This details out, just our responsibilities with the audit. This details out, just our responsibilities with the audit. It's a lot of required accounting language, but we had no disagreements with management during our timeframe. We weren't locked out from the accounting records. We also, we didn't have any other non-compliance that needed to be reported either. It's not that I've talked and kind of given you guys some information. What questions do you have?
Ashley.
Yeah?
I'll go first. When did this audit start?
So we received the file to start the audit in November of twenty twenty-four.
Of twenty twenty-four?
Correct.
Okay.
Weren't you hiring in twenty twenty-one?
So we, the previous town manager issued an RFP. We were awarded the RFP in twenty twenty-one. We came in to start the audit in twenty twenty-one, and immediately realized the records did not have the financial information we needed, and we stopped our audit and said we have to have complete financial records. Can't do an audit without your financial records being complete.
It took you how long to get those records?
Until November of twenty twenty-four, is when we got the final records.
So from twenty-one to twenty-two?
Correct.
So about three years it took, well, three years to get the information we needed to include that one?
Correct. So as part of our accounting requirements, we're required to test through the date of the issuance of the financial statements or data field work. So at one point, the twenty twenty records were ready, but nothing had been done for twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-three, and we can't test that if that's not complete as well.
Nothing would be done as reconciliation, I mean.
Correct.
So from twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, there was no reconciliation, what type of?
The reconciliations needed to be redone. There were some transactions that were deleted, and I, it is not our responsibility to specifically report exactly why they were deleted, but transactions were deleted, just missing, and in order to, for us to feel that the records were complete, the reconciliations.
And these transactions, I believe, were not twenty, not the year of the audit, but from twenty-one?
They were, it was the year of audit, and even previous years.
So what it comes down to is you had a three-year gap there, where we had chased down information from switching from one system to another, stuff that was deleted, stuff that had been corrected, stuff had been re-entered, it's something, and it was, it was basically a jungle of stuff had been worked out.
And at the time, the bank statements needed, there was a switch in some of the banks at that time, so the bank statements needed to be reordered at that point. I'm sure Janet can speak to all of the things that the accountants that who quoted your records needed to do, but we couldn't start an audit without them.
So twenty twenty was pretty much just a wish, I'm trying to find everything that was missing?
And that's why I understand that there were some invoices that were missing.
Okay. And then you got to think about, you're at the behest of the other banks and all that stuff too. You got to work on their timetable, and you call them and ask for their stuff.
Yeah, I hear that was an undertaking.
Yeah, especially if you don't do business with them anymore. I can't imagine they're feeling too obliged to be in a hurry.
So how many journal entries did you guys actually specifically have to do this audit?
I believe it was forty-something.
And do you know what the average?
I don't, off the top of my head. As part of our audit, in the completion tonight, we do send all copies of the journal entries that we needed to post, so you guys will have the listing and copies of those as well.
And so within those, you were paying your since twenty twenty-one. How many hours did you guys put into this audit?
Four hundred and ninety-five hours into this audit.
And what's the average of your audit?
I'm not sure, because we don't have an average for you all. So I would, but for a town, yeah, but for a town your size, I would expect maybe a hundred, maybe a hundred and something.
Well, this was just twenty twenty.
Correct.
So Janet, have we done twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three?
We can't, they can't continue until they finish twenty twenty. They're contracted to do that.
Okay, so those are still outstanding years.
Actually, one other question is, unless you submit it, are you guys still up for twenty twenty-one?
So we'll submit it in a contract for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Because twenty twenty is done now, those can actually happen a little bit quicker.
How?
Just simply because we needed to get the, all the records corrected up through twenty twenty, to be able then to get through those.
So how soon do you think, once you submit it, that we can start?
I, Erica and I talked right prior to this, that we have somebody that can start in the upcoming weeks. Now, it does typically take, on a clean audit, eight weeks from start to finish. So when we come in for field work, we get the records fixed, it's about eight weeks. When we're having to dig for items, wait for stuff, you know, that's something that would be messy, then it, you know, it usually takes longer. We plan our schedule out in advance. We actually plan our schedule three months in advance. So kind of taking a look at that, I would encourage the town, and I don't have any indication that this wouldn't happen, but to be very quick on providing the city records that are, that are needed for that.
Realistically, you get everything you need, we're talking twenty-four weeks for all three years, give or take twenty-four, thirty weeks?
So it's, it's four years.
Eight, sixteen, four years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, alright, so like eight to ten weeks for a year?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
You mean, in two weeks, the other would be easier than four months?
I sure hope so, but, but, you know, I am notoriously an optimistic person, but, you know, I think it, I think.
Watch your laugh, actually, when you say that.
Because she is a very optimist.
Well, I'm the same way, too.
Oh, okay.
And sometimes that bites us in the butt a little.
Oh, okay.
Not in that particular situation, but.
Would you believe that having a monthly controller come in here to help out with the reconciliation would help your process?
So I think that's an option. I think that's an option to provide some strengthening in your internal controls. If you have somebody who is able to come in, so that council needs to spend, you know, less time looking at the finance records, and if you could look behind your team, I think they can point out a lot of things and actually correct things before we get into the audit, which would reduce some of these material weaknesses and significant deficiencies.
In terms of, reduce the cost of?
Correct. That's what I think.
You essentially just hire a person, a person to come in once a month, or, and just make sure all the data close out and go through, or even, even around that time?
Yep.
Okay.
And plus, Ashley and I discussed different things we can put in place, like reconciling daily, instead of monthly, and different things like that.
We have, we have some clients in small towns that actually reconcile daily. They, at the end of the day, they take twenty minutes, and they go in and they look at what happened to the bank that day, and are able to verify that with the records. If, if you're working on something throughout the month as opposed to just the end of the month, you don't have to remember what happened thirty days ago, or more than thirty days ago. You're able to identify things for her.
Ms. Todd, does that seem like a little feasible solution for you guys?
Absolutely.
It's an end of thing, right?
Yep, and some of the other suggestions she gave me, like the, the finance policy and procedures, I got an example from this data, I already have that, just to kind of look at and put those in place. So there's lots of things to be put in place. I feel after this is cleaned up, it'll go a little faster, because I wasn't here then, so Carolyn and I have kind of a filing system now. So I feel like we can provide them the items faster, in my opinion.
And we're also on the new system that she was saying, well, there was a transition between the two systems.
Yeah, we have a new billing system that's been there since twenty-one.
Forward is on the same billing system?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm going to take you to it, but I'm asking, you can say no, I can't do that. Twenty nineteen didn't finish yet. For all these items in twenty nineteen were gotten rid of. Would you have to go back and put them on your back end?
So you, the town hired another external accountant, not us, or not somebody that works for us, to come redo your records from that period of time. I don't know if they, what they had to put in from twenty nineteen, I'd have to get them to kind of say what they need to do or didn't do. I know when we looked at the, we are required to, of course, look at the prior auditor's work papers. When we looked at the work papers, the numbers that they had to do the audit were different than what we were seeing when we first got in here. So something happened in between when they did the audit and when, when we first came on site.
You kind of spanned a lot of the.
Yeah, so any accounting software has, you know, has some flexibility, which can be great, but it also can be a real pain in the butt sometimes. So when you, when a town provides a financial record to an auditor, they've started that snapshot in time. Now, if something happens in this accounting record after they start at that snapshot at the time, they might not know that, because they have a snapshot of what, what they did the audit from. So if after they completed their audit, there were transactions that might have been, I'm just giving you examples, might have been deleted, or updated, or changed, or something of that manner, that would actually change the previous year's accounting records. And some of them can be as simple as, oh, we needed to void that check because nobody cashed it. That, that does provide a change in a previous accounting record. So some of them can be as easy and small as that, but someone could be, some can be as big. If you click in the wrong area in QuickBooks, you might completely undo something from twenty nineteen. So the, the accounting softwares can be very sensitive.
I think what Mr. Donovan's leading up to is the packet that we gave you of all the items that had to be deleted. Did you guys have to go back and put them in? I think that's.
We did not.
I think that's what he's asking.
Now, who's good in the other room?
Wigglesworth, Leighton, Warriors, and Chance. I'm certain that they'll probably come and let you know all that they had to do and give you a detail.
They're going to give a written report to council, so.
So we're going to get a report from a little bit more there?
Yes. Not as detailed as what you have there, but you'll get a report from.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
I just think that, you know, going forward, you know, we have, we're behind years, which is an actual issue. We've got allegedly building projects, things going on in the town, that the financials need to be straightened out. And as we move forward with this, my suggestion to mayor and council is, we're very up to date on exactly what the procedures are that are implemented, how it's being done. There's, this is kind of a big thing, so we'll have to come back to it. But just start to put it out there, that we're pretty far behind.
I agree, and if, if, and I would think the same thing, if we haven't had an audit done, and we still have years of auditing to do, us as a council, and where we stand financially, complete, one hundred percent, then us as a council cannot make a correct decision on the appropriate, correct decision, unless we know where we stand financially, for a fact. I totally agree with you on that. I feel as if from now, I feel that now, from now moving forward, we don't make any financial decisions until we have results, and at least figure out where our money is. Because if we make a financial decision without knowing where we stand financially, doesn't make sense.
The only exception might be something that's already outstanding.
Can you define financial decision?
Upgraded on, on any type of water tower, any, any improvements that are not necessarily.
So you don't want to, you want to stop all grant applications and everything? Or you're just talking about out of the general fund?
The general fund. Anything out of, grant applications is fine, that's not, that's not removing money from any money that we have.
So major, major things out of the general fund?
Yeah, anything.
Absolutely.
Correct, anything of, anything of, out of our particular account, for, for whatever reason, any major decisions that means that, that we, we can't do that, we can't logically make a correct decision until we know where our financials stand.
Right, and as of now, we don't have any major decisions on the table, so.
Correct, but if we're moving forward, I mean.
At least until we get all its back.
Until we know, until we know, as a council, where we stand, particularly on money issues, we cannot feasibly make a correct, a reasonable decision on any.
Now, the only project I know of, and it's not out of the general funds, we got grant money and stuff like that, is the town hall project, remember?
So, yeah, that's, that's all.
That's all good, though.
Yeah, it's all grant-funded.
That's all, anything that's completely grant-funded, we're good.
Grant funding doesn't, as long as it's grant-funded, it doesn't come out of our account, so there's no issue.
I.
But any major decision that may be coming out of our account, you cannot, I mean, you're clear, and it's like, decision on that unless you know where our money's standing.
I agree with you on that, because we still got three more years to go, eight to ten weeks per year. It'll be close to, what, November, December, before we have a final on anything? And, yeah.
That's the optimistic.
I'm trying, and I'm trying. If they can be optimistic, I can try to.
I'm not optimistic.
I was, when I talked with Hal, and he told me how clean and everything was, and I was very optimistic.
In terms of late weeks before you?
I mean, I was young back then, I was.
Are you becoming more optimistic?
Ashley, I do hate to circle back around, because I'm just, again, trying to catch up on some things in my head. So the books back in twenty twenty didn't capture columns like water, sewer fund, street fund. The only financials I remember were really, really, really broken out. So we saw, we saw, I could see how money was moving around, or, hey, you know, sewer main broke, don't worry. Oh, we see we have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and are we still, have we gone back to that, or?
Yeah, everything in QuickBooks is labeled individually like that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the columns were there, or are still there, it's just.
Data wasn't in there. Okay.
And she, when Ashley mentioned the young lady that worked putting stuff back, Mr. Donovan, you should remember, that was the young lady that Hal hired when I was out with my surgery. She was the one that did that, Lisa Sears, I don't know if you remember that or not. The council hired her, and that's who she was referencing.
They went in to put all this information back in. When they went in to put this information back in, that was years ago.
They started it, yes, at that point.
Several years ago is when they started putting stuff in.
Correct.
So.
But it wasn't finished.
That's a hypothetically, if it was three years ago, they put the information back in, that was the need. Why did it take so long to do the audit?
Again, we didn't get the completed financial records till November of twenty-four. That was when they were supplied to us, as to what and why it took them so long to get the records to current. I think Janet and the other accountants can attest to that. But it was, I believe it's November third, twenty twenty-four, we got the records.
We really got here a lot in three years. So in other words, the records, excuse me, mayor. So in other words, we get this report, Janet, it's going to tell us what happened here. Why it took this, little guy here so long to get this stuff done.
Yeah, and it's not like they gave us a list and said, we need this, this, and this, and then it took us three years to give it to, or it was piece at a time. Whatever we could find, we, you know, the best that we could.
And a lot of this was contributing to the bank, the bank was a quarter, I think, several percent?
Not a lot of it, some of it, when you switched from PNC to, I don't know if you went right to community from PNC, I don't know what you guys did then, but it was hard to get statements and.
Excuse me, what did we need from them?
Bank statements, because when the previous town manager was here, there was no bank statements in the building that we could really put our hands on. But now Carolyn and I file them by month, we have all the bank statements and everything.
Then you guys started filing them by month? Let me get, let me get.
Yep.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, we'll slip out.
No, we'll leave it. Thank you.
Thank you, and see you.
So Janet, when can we get a bank getting a report?
From Wigglesworth?
Yes.
I don't know, I'll follow up with them. I was on vacation last week, so I'll follow up with them, and that, you know. Maybe I can get them to come to the June meeting. I don't, I'm not promising that, but I'll see if I can.
That is good, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on, since we're scheduled, we're going to move on. Approval limits, the number two thousand and twenty-five, let's see, the approval.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes. Yes.
Our reading of correspondence, moving to the next item, reading correspondence. No? Okay. We're going to move to the next one, which is the police support.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. You have my written report. Just to go off the written report, I did want to announce that the police department has shifted to the Axon Bodyguard. has shifted to the Axon body warmer camera system. These grant-funded units provided vast improvement over the previous system with reliability and evidence gathering. They soon will be, they're actually live and, and onboard it and live and running now. They will soon be integrated with the Axon in-car cameras, so everything is one big system now. So we don't have body warmer cameras on this system and in-car cameras from this system, it will all be accessed to one place, which makes our evidence handling so much better and easier. Uh, as well as, uh, as shown on the written report, the department continued its focused efforts on motorist safety and keeping our residential roads and highways safer for our residents and visitors. Corporal Tucker's diligent efforts on keeping our roadway safe from impaired drivers resulted in five DUI arrests for the month of May, and she should be acknowledged for her dedication to impaired driving enforcement on top of her normal duties. Speaking of DUI, our DRE program, as I announced, I believe it was back in the March meeting, Corporal Tucker has successfully completed the DRE program. The Greenwood Police Department received an Office of Highway Safety grant for DRE Corporal Tucker. This enhances not only our ability and local enforcement efforts, but it enables Corporal Tucker to assist other agencies to combat impaired driving. So that, that grant was provided through the Office of Highway Safety. Lieutenant Thomas applied for an NRA grant, which covered the calls to materials needed for the Eddie the Eagle program that the police department provides to all the students of the elementary school. Lieutenant Thomas took the initiative on this and secured this grant to save the town money, so he should be acknowledged for his efforts. Training, Lieutenant Thomas and I attended T seven tactical leadership training hosted by the Lewis Police Department on April fifteenth. Lieutenant Thomas also attended wellness training hosted by the Department of Safety and Homeland Security. This training is a hot topic and an area of focus amongst law enforcement community dealing with mental health and the well-being of its law enforcement officers. So that was a very vital training that he attended. I'm sure most people have seen through our posts on our social media, it is now official, the Greenwood Police Department has been officially re-accredited. The police officer, uh, the police officer standards and training commission and the Delaware Police Accreditation Committee have approved the Greenwood Police Department for re-accreditation. DPAC assessors evaluated the Greenwood Police Department by reviewing the department's policies, procedures, and practices. The DPAC assessors and their team also conducted a comprehensive on-site inspection back on January, when I was so stressed down, if you remember, uh, which included a tour of the police building, interviews and, uh, interviews with department members, viewing our patrol fleet, and a thorough review of proofs to ensure all accreditation standards were met. I'm proud to announce that the Greenwood Police Department received a two-year re-accreditation approval, and again, I would like to acknowledge, uh, all of Lieutenant Thomas's hard work to run this police department when it had no leadership, and, uh, his diligence, uh, through this entire demanding process. If it weren't for his dedication, the PD would have not successfully passed the assessments, so. Moving on, um, we have, as you've seen with our fundraising efforts, uh, we have developed and are in the early stages of a K nine program. So to strengthen our law enforcement capabilities, the K nine unit can serve as a bridge between departments and communities. A well-trained police dog not only enhances mutual aid with neighboring agencies, but also improves public relations. Over the past three months, there have been sixteen notated instances where officers conducted traffic stops involving suspected narcotics, yet no K nine was available for deployment in either Sussex or nearby Kent Counties. In each case, the absence of a K nine resource potentially limited the officer's abilities to detect, intercept illegal substances, forcing officers to proceed without this critical tool. US thirteen is a corridor for illegal substances to travel, and those were sixteen examples of missed opportunities for deployment. A K nine, a K nine unit is not just a tactical asset, it is an investment in the public safety, officer wellness, and community trust. This program will not incur a large financial burden on the town. The entire cost of the K nine unit, including the dog, training, and equipment, will be funded through grants and local fundraisers. Minimal annual costs will include veterinary appointments and food. The dog will be housed by the, uh, housed and assigned to Corporal Tucker. The K nine and the handler Corporal Tucker will receive formal training through the Delaware State Police K nine training program at no cost, ensuring professional level preparation and certification. And finally, the last thing I have is please come out on Saturday the seventeenth for the first Greenwood Market. We will have a police vehicle there on display, we will also have a booth set up, uh, by Corporal Tucker for fundraising information and to show support for the K nine program. So that's all I have for my verbal report.
Personally, as a town council person, would like to thank the Greenwood Police Department for all, everybody's hard work in getting this credited.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
I agree.
We have a lot more gray hair because of it.
It falls out.
It doesn't fall out.
Nice work.
Thank you.
So with the K nine program, I, I have some questions, like, I'm all for it, but I have some questions like, who, did the dog stage Corporal Tucker correct?
Yes, she would be assigned as the handler.
Who takes care of it if she takes vacation and stuff, is the dog considered all duty? Is that a point, or how does that work?
Sure, I mean, these are all questions that I can answer in time. Obviously, as I said in the beginning, this is all preliminary, this is all very.
I'll be right back, and then we'll get together later down the road, are you cool with that?
Sure.
All right, cool. We're good then. It's just the stuff in my mind, I'm like, great, but, you know.
What was your game?
Yes, sir.
Tucker, Corporal Tucker is gonna be, is gonna be with training of the dog. How long is the training?
Well, I mean, it depends on what assignment we send the dog for and what training we send for. Originally, she, uh, the K nine would be sent and the handler would be sent for scent detection. So that can be up to sixteen weeks of training.
And that be done in Dover?
Uh, it would be done by the Delaware State Police.
And do they have some, what, do they have somebody to cover her for fifteen weeks while she's training?
Well, we have our normal shift officers, yes.
There'd be two of you.
Two of us.
Did, um, the one thing that I'm, the insurance, because I've never earned insurance for, for, for a K nine. Do you know what the cost of the insurance that would be incurred to the town for having a K nine unit?
Uh, well, we're currently in the process of that with, uh, Town Manager Todd.
I checked with the insurance company, they can't insure it until it's an active K nine dog.
But do we have an idea on what the cost?
No, not, the underwriters are giving us a cost. But the dog that they are using, they're not using, let me change my words, the dog that is at Corporal Tucker's house now is not a working dog, so we can't insure it now.
Okay, but we have no idea what the insurance could possibly do whatsoever?
No, no.
I wonder if there's a state average?
There's a, yeah.
You know, my, I.
Check that thing. I was suggesting, this is purely a suggestion on my part, I was suggesting if people had questions, we'd submit them to the chief, so the chief could get the answers instead of being on the side, you know, asking questions, he has no clue to it.
Correct.
I mean, you know, we have questions, I'm sorry, I didn't, but, you know, ask the chief, you know, I had this question or that, and then the chief can get up the answers and come back and say, well, this, that, or the other, and I think it would be more appropriate for us to do that.
So you're gonna, you're gonna listen to the other?
I like, I like the idea of a K nine unit, I'm just worried about the cost of the K nine unit, and, um, I don't like the fact that we're pushing forward on a K nine unit without council knowing that the cost of it and what it's gonna do for the town, so. But I, I feel like that's something that the council should know before we purchase a dog, before we set everything up in place without us as council knowing what it may actually cost for the town itself. And I'm saying there's anything wrong with getting a K nine unit, you can read it here, but I think it's something that, that the council itself should have an understanding on, as we were just saying before, we don't know what our finances are at all, and we don't know what it's gonna cost for a dog, we don't know what it's gonna cost for insurance, we don't know, um, the in and outs of, of having the K nine unit itself and what it may cost the town, I think that's something that we, that we should have established before we, should we do the purchases, should we, you're already, you've already purchased with the dog, with the K nine?
So, um, the dog has been donated to us, so that comes at no cost.
Okay, okay. And this, again, these are all things that are just coming out of the wind, uh, something that we're gonna.
No, I understand, and, uh, again, through my verbal report, as I, as I advised, the entire cost of the K nine unit, including the dog, the training and equipment, will be funded through grants and local fundraisers.
Okay. And I mean the fundraisers before that, now the grants.
The initial cost and, and the initial push for the program, the costs are basically covered through the grants at this point.
Which raise were you using, which grants covered the K nine?
So we, we have the financial report and a structured tree of the grants that are covering it. I can provide that at a later time.
Okay. I have another question, I just feel like, my, some of what it's coming out of.
From, from the anticipated minute, the anticipated annual costs with the veterinary appointments and bills, the insurances and, and the food for the dog, which we're also working on to find sponsorships and or donorships to cover the, the dog food. So, um, the annual cost for, what we were looking at in the initial assessments were approximately fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred dollars a year.
That's nothing like what I thought.
No.
So that's not the insurance for the dog, fifteen hundred, it's just, so, and these are things that we just, I just wish it was, it came to council before we jumped on this situation, just so we knew what, what we were, what we're spending as a town, but, um, I think it's a good idea that Mr. Donovan had that we all come up with questions, and we're gonna be asking, sort of, in the line time, but a whole bunch of questions too.
Did he give you some time to get some more information gathered that way?
Sure.
Have a conversation about it. You're, you're, obviously, like, this is the only thing, you said this is the only K nine that can be around this area, for the most part, at least available.
I mean, there is, there is definitely assorted of K nines in, in Sussex and Kent County, lower Kent County, so.
Chief, is there any way, if we can be more visible, I've had several people, you know, that, that wanna know where police officers are, because they never see them, is there any way you can just ride down the street, you know, most part, just.
I mean.
To people that like the street.
Absolutely, I mean, I think from, from our numbers, the numbers speak for themselves from your report, from the written report, um, our traffic, our traffic efforts have
Understand that, but I mean, I understand, well, you know, we have three police officers, I never see a police officer, and, you know, to appease the constituents, uh, you know, maybe the ladies and gentlemen can just ride down the street, just, you know.
Sure, I mean, if.
I'm not saying that I don't believe the law, I mean, you could do that so they know you're there.
Is there specific areas of focus that they're requesting increased patrols?
On Beaver.
On Beaver Street? Yeah, well, we have increased patrols on Beaver and, and minor.
Play your song, say, I'm here, you know. Because you probably go there in a restroom or something, they don't hear that.
Sure, no problem.
If you would.
Yeah. Right, you ready? You ready? You ready? Okay. Now the town, we're gonna move on that, thank you, Chief, I appreciate that.
Yep.
We'll move on to the next one, Town Manager Report.
Uh, just a couple things tonight, I applied to, with Delmarva Power to add pole lights on Mill Street in areas where there's little or no pole lights, it was approved, and they're gonna add twelve poles on Mill Street with LED bulbs, and it'll be at zero cost to the town, that project should be starting within the next thirty days. As you guys probably know, Sussex County passed ordinance number three zero two seven regarding accessory dwelling units. I was at a meeting last week, and it was stressed, each town should enact an ordinance to, to cover their own municipalities, so I would like to put that on the agenda for the June meeting, that's something that needs, needs to be discussed. Legislators, they're on the, on break right now, but there's one bill that will affect municipalities, House Bill seventy-eight, which would amend Title fourteen and Title twenty-nine of the Delaware Code, require that under FOIA, public bodies must make digital recordings of meetings and post those meetings on their website within seven days and keep it on the website for at least one year. This includes executive sessions being recorded, but those recordings may be withheld from being posted on the website. Again, that's still in legislature, so we haven't gotten an answer on that one yet. And then, lastly, the charter change, um, that we discussed at the last one did the resolution for, I spoke with Vice Mayor Massey after the meeting as he was heading that project. The one that was approved would not allow us to go forward with anything that, that the goal for approving that was for. But at the time, we had put the water tower on hold because we had some meetings and we have enough potable and fire suppression for the existing homes and businesses and at least, and some additional projects depending on the size, as long as we use half or less of the capacity daily and we're well within regulations, we don't use half of that. So you, if you want to still submit that, we certainly can, or you can wait later in the year because you're gonna be submitting other chart changes from what you've said, and you can submit all at one time. Otherwise, if you submit this one, you'll have to go back to legislation again and say, oh, nope, that, we don't, we need more money, so you're gonna have to redo the one that you did. And the balance in the bank accounts as of today, eight hundred seventy-two thousand nine dollars and seventy-three cents. There is the CD that is getting ready to renew in there, there's one thirty-four oh fifty-one twenty-seven, and it's going to renew at about four point one percent, I'm waiting on the actual answer of the rate interest rate on that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Danny, and a question.
Yep.
Johnny, is there any way when, when we have to sign all of these financial, like, government, we haven't signed, no. Is there any way we can actually see what it is, I mean, once it's now, I don't have clue what now can be.
Are you talking about something from the bank?
Yes.
There's a docu-sign thing they send you?
Right. Can we get, this is the one in market, and this is transfer tax money, and then this is the one in reserve, and so on, so on, so forth.
I haven't seen what they send you, so it doesn't specify what bank account it is? All right, yep, I'll reach out.
One of them is the one in market.
All right. Yep, I will ask them to put account names on there because you guys are getting ready to get all those again to sign, so.
Next one, uh, this is all business discussion, a possible little charter change, you pretend in section twenty-nine and section thirty-two.
I mean, we, we table that, take our funds, and we just heard from the Town Manager, we need to do the charter change, which we will.
Yeah. I'll make the motion. We're not gonna submit our, you know, we're making a hundred, no point, so.
And we don't wanna submit a change, an emergency charter change, and then three or four months again, we're going back and say, we need a different.
So, Mr. Donovan, you, you motioned a table, the charter change?
I'll start, yes.
Mr. Nice, you second that?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Johnson? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Nice, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
And we're gonna do the, council member comments. So, let's, let's start this side, council member comments, yeah.
It goes to state dinners on many windows, if you will, that were made last month, about, uh, council people telling people not to give us money, not to give us grants. I talked to both legislators, and they both assured me that no one on this council had ever approached him about not giving money to the town of Greenwood, nor stopping any grants from the town of Greenwood. I just want to clarify that, so, so there seem to be some questions about it, so that's what they said, so.
Now, Mr. Van, Mr. Wilson, both, I talked to them, both, and asked them, I said, there's one, he'd ask you questions, anybody ever approached you, but he said, no, sir, nobody has ever, the one that's ever approached, Mr. Van, was Mr. Massey, reference to a charter change, but other than that, nobody has ever told them anything about stopping money nor denying grants for the town of Greenwood, and that's nobody at this council.
I, no comment I didn't make, I would like to thank the towns, Ridgeville, for hosting that scat dinner that most of us attended, um, gave a chance to talk to some local legislators and fellow town, you know, council people and everything, and really get, get some good information, so it, it was really appreciated, and I just, I'd like to thank them for that. It, it was really nice, and Mr. Donovan, had, you know, he got to meet, told Mr. Wilson in person, person, you know, that says a lot, when you talk to your local friends face to face, so, but, and thank you guys for setting that up for us, we really appreciate.
We just got the invitation for the next one, I'll email it out to everybody where it is and.
Look, it, it's appreciated, because it gives us a chance, it, it's one thing to go through a legislator's, like, assistant or, or whatever, but when you get to talk to them face to face, it makes a difference.
I would like to thank the same thing, Scott, was absolutely phenomenal, and, and. I would like to thank the same things gotten was absolutely phenomenal, and, and, and learning more, and also getting together with another town, set the town, was also what we really need. I also wanna thank, thank our fire company, uh, which is something that was new to me, that I've never even about, uh, they have a beef and barbecue thing, uh, which is absolutely phenomenal, this is exactly what the town needs. So I really wanna thank them for hosting that, I mean, it's, it's live music, which is exactly what we want in this town, we need this community back together. And I really wanna thank Fire Department for setting that up, uh, and also, I mean, making that would be great as well, because that's what we need as a town, which unite as one, so we can all get together and relate and have a good time, and that's exactly what I'm hoping this will, it's.
Is it this live walking?
It's ever walk, yeah.
It's ever walk.
Yeah, especially when we use that, so.
Okay.
I would suggest anybody who, who likes live music is good, that is the way, but it's good, and I wanna thank the Fire Department for hosting, so.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the emergency session pertaining to a push on mine.
One second.
Is that yes?
Yes.
Everybody here? Uh, I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Checking that one?
Second, do we adjourn the meeting, do we adjourn for a second, and then come back?
You go into executive, then you have to come back out. So, yeah, so you just go in, so I'll stop the video and you go into.